Good evening and welcome to this special edition of Carney Live. Tonight, we're going to introduce to you the five candidates who are running for the school board in the Carney Missouri School District. The election is April 4th of 2023. For tonight's forum, we've invited all panelists in to answer questions that we have not provided to any of the candidates. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to give an opening introduction. Then they will be given a selection of questions that are known only by me, the moderator, and the producer, Brian Watts. No one else was provided any of the questions prior to tonight's broadcast. Each person has the opportunity to answer each question. They have one minute to do so. And then following the questions, they will all be allowed to give a closing statement. We will begin by introducing you to the candidates. We've broken the candidates up into panels because of the studio size and for the format of the program. Going first will be three of the candidates, and we'll meet them now. The first candidate is Nancy Rozika. The second candidate is Len Broughton. And the third candidate is Richard Cawthon. By drawing, the candidates also were chosen on who would answer which question first so that no candidate has to answer the first question every time. The same was done for the opening statement. And now, we will begin as Nancy drew first, and Nancy, you may begin with your introduction.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Rozika. And for me, this is about, I've always had the desire to serve, but I never really had the time. And now I'm in a position where I have both. And along with that, I have all these years of experience in managing people and processes and budgets and systems and solving hard problems. And so now I think I'm in a position where I can really make a difference.
Thank you, Nancy. Our second candidate for introductions is Len Broughton.
Yeah, my name is Leonard Broughton. I go by Len. A lot of people know me as Len. And the reason I'm choosing to run for the Carney School Board is I've lived here 12 years. I'm invested to this community. I have a daughter. I have two sons that graduated from Carney. I have a daughter that teaches in the school system, and I have three and one on the way grandchildren that will be future Bulldogs. And I just want everyone to know that I'm invested because Carney opened up their arms to me 12 years ago when I moved here from Ohio. And I just want to give back to this great community.
Thank you, Len. And the final candidate in this panel is Rick Cawthon. Rick?
Hello, I'm Rick. I've chosen to run for school board this year due to just getting more involved in my community. Been going to the school board meetings since before COVID came and just very interested in serving. I've got one daughter that has graduated from Carney High School. I've got a grandson that we are raising that is currently a third grader. So heavily invested in his future and the future of all Bulldogs and just to make the school district as best as we can.
Thank you, sir. By drawing, we also drew who would begin the questioning. Nancy, one once again. So Nancy, you get the first question first. And the question is this: What do you feel makes you best qualified to serve on the Carney Missouri School District Board?
Well, there's a few things. One is I've got time to give it, and it does take time and it takes energy. Two is that I've been around. I've managed people, I've managed processes, I've managed budgets, I bought systems, I've worked in technology for 30-plus years, and I know what kids are going to need going forward and what they need to learn. And we need to raise the bar. They need to, you know, we need to expand the opportunities and we need to also then we can expect greater achievement and higher scores and all of the good things that come from spending our energy on expanding opportunities.
Len, that question goes to you. What makes you feel that you're best qualified to serve on the Carney School Board?
I feel I'm the kind of person that, I'm a listener, and I will listen to the teachers, the support staff, the students, the parents, and the community. And I'm going to be that liaison that's going to take that back from the administration, whatever their questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas are. I'm going to take them back to the administration and make sure I get back to them and be a voice for them so they're heard with the many different things that they have going on in their everyday life. Like I said, having kids and my wife teaching in the school system, I kind of see, and I was a parent, but having kids and a wife that was in the school system, I kind of understand what's going on there. And I also have the time to give back to this community, and I look forward to serving them, and I hope they give me that opportunity because I feel I'm the right person in a liaison role that can be that bridge between them and the administration.
Thank you, Len. Rick, same question. What do you feel makes you most qualified to serve on the Carney School Board?
Well, like I said previously, I've had a daughter graduate. I've got a grandson that is currently in the elementary system. So we're keyed into what's going on within our school systems themselves. Also, my background is problem solving. I work currently for Citibank where I am that middleman. I have people that come to me with problems and I have to fix those and get those solved pretty quickly. So I think I can bring that to the school board as well, working with parents, people in the community, and bring that back to the school board so that we can solve any issues that may arise and come to a good agreement and something that's going to help everyone, not just a single person or a single issue.
Thank you, Rick. Next question goes to Len first. Len, at its core, what do you think your duties and responsibilities are as a school board member?
I believe first and foremost, I'm accountable to the community because the community is the one that elects me, the parents, the students, the teachers, and the support staff. I think they're the most important part because they need to be heard, and then us as a board need to be transparent in letting them know what's happening and giving them a timely, a timeframe of when questions are going to be answered and make sure they're well-formed and, like I said in my other answer, to make sure their needs are met. To me, that's one of the most important things is that I'm there for them and I'm working for them and I'm accountable to them to make sure I get back to them with an answer.
Thank you. Rick, same question. At its core, what do you think your duties are as a school board member?
I think my duty would be first and foremost, the safety of the children, making decisions, informed decisions for the whole school district that would help all kids and staff. And taking those decisions and putting them out there for our community, make sure they know what decisions are being made, why they're being made, and what the pros and cons were that we considered in coming up with that decision. So I think just making a safe school system and a well-balanced school system for our kids are first and foremost priority.
Thank you very much. Nancy, same question to you. At its core, what do you feel your duties and responsibilities are as a school board member?
Well, first and foremost, we're obligated to serve the residents that put us here and all the residents, whether they voted for us or not, and to serve the kids. And it's got to be about the kids, and it can't be about some opinion or another opinion. There's going to be compromise, there's going to be structure, there's going to be things that you can't avoid because you're in that position where you're managing all of the goings-on. We're there to set policy, we're there to set strategy, we're there to enable and facilitate all of the things that we want to see the school system accomplish and that we want to see our kids accomplish and make sure that they succeed going forward.
Thank you, Nancy. Next question, Rick goes to you first. Rick, what is something you think the Carney Missouri School District does really well?
I think that our district right now, I mean, look at sports last year. We were the top and almost across the whole board. So I think we really invest in our kids and making sure that they're trying to achieve their best potential. Academically, we are on par, we're at the top. I'd say the top 10% within our neighboring schools with all of our scores. So I think our teachers and our coaches are just doing a phenomenal job in investing back into our kids, and we need to continue that tradition here in Carney.
Thank you. Nancy, back up to you, same question. What's something you think the Carney Missouri School District does well?
I think they have a pretty broad offering for kids. I think that Dr. Miller and the entire staff does an amazing job of keeping parents informed of what's going on and how their kids are doing, and they pay attention to each kid and make sure that they know that what's working for that student and what's not working for that student. And I think they're very attentive to those needs and very capable when it comes to solving anything that comes up or making sure that everyone, every one of those children has the opportunity to do well and to excel. And I think that the quality of staff is top-notch, and I hope to keep it that way.
Thank you, Nancy. Len, same question goes to you. What is something you think the Carney Missouri School District does well?
I believe the programs that we have in our schools and kind of along with what Nancy and Richard said, the teachers that we have are phenomenal. They're excellent educators, and we have like Real World Learning, we have the STEM program. My daughter teaches in the Lens program. So it's offering kids, it's many opportunities where they can find out what they want to do in life. If it's not college, they might be able to find a career, and then they can go shadow that person with that career and then see if that's really where they want to go or if they want to make another change. And I like that we're offering that for kids, and we're going to, eventually in the future, we're going to be offering that all the way down. So right now, it's kind of in the high school, we're doing a little bit of it in the junior high, in the fourth and fifth grade. But I think it's a neat program that we have to teach kids that college isn't for everybody. And that's okay to say because we need those texts, we need those tradespeople, and figure out what job meets their needs.
Thank you. Now we're back to you, Nancy, for the first round and the question. The Carney School District has an excellent reputation. With that in mind, what is something the Carney School District could improve on?
I think we need to raise the bar. I think that what we've done so far is really, really good, but the last board meeting that I was at and they showed the test scores, and yeah, we're one or two in our peer group or similar-sized groups, but how do we compare to the best in the state and the best in Kansas and the best in the country? Because, you know, as a country, we're not doing so hot in some of those areas. And so to say that you're the best of a small group is great, and that's important, but you got to go to the next level. We got to keep pushing that. And you can have those expectations if you put the opportunity out there and you give those kids the opportunity to do the advanced placement courses or to do the extra work or to go out in the community, like Len said, and spend some time understanding, you know, what it takes to get the job done.
Len, same question goes to you. What is something you feel the Carney School District can improve on?
I think we need to make sure as an administration, we need to be listening to our teachers. We need to be listening to our parents, we need to be listening to our support staff, anyone that's working in that building. They need to know that the administration has their back, they're listening to their concerns, we're going to try to meet their needs of the many things they may need to fulfill their day in the classroom. To me, I think that's really important. I think Dr. Miller is doing a phenomenal job at being more transparent to the community, which I thought was needed a long time ago, and it's coming. But I think we need to take another step and make sure our teachers know that we need them. Because the problem is we're losing teachers, and we need to make sure that they feel like they're wanted here, they're being listened to, and they get answers brought back to them. And I think administration can do a little better job of being transparent with them and understanding their needs.
Thank you. Rick, same question goes to you. What is something you feel the Carney Missouri School District could improve on?
Well, to reiterate what my fellow candidates have said here is we really need to support our teachers. You know, like Len just said, we're losing teachers. We're losing that valuable one-on-one resource that is right with the children. And I have to say, it's basically because of pay. You know, we need to look at ways that we can increase the pay of our teachers to keep them in our district. So that way, the kids know who their teachers are going to be. They can develop those relationships. My grandson has a great relationship with his teacher right now, and I would hate to see that go because she needed to help her family and move out of the district for pay. And we need to invest in our resources right here in Carney so that we can hit that next level, we can hit that, hey, we are number two, we're number one in the country, and make sure that we are investing in our children.
Thank you very much. Len, you're up first on the next question. If elected, what would you hope would be the key accomplishments of the board during your tenure on the board?
Well, Carney has a plan. It's called, I want to say Bulldog Care Plan, that they've got a plan for the next five years of what they want to see happen. I hope I get to be part of that, and I hope I get to see us accomplish the things that are on that plan, and we can able to pay more, to hire more teachers, to keep teachers here, to make sure our kids feel safe in the schools, and make sure we can hire maybe another resource officer so we don't have one guy running around four or five different schools. But I think if elected, I got a feeling it can happen, and I think this community needs to step up and with the school district, together we can make this happen. And it's just a matter, it's going to take everybody in this great community that we live in, and that's what I feel. I think I can help be part of that.
Rick, if you were elected, what is one of the key accomplishments that you would like to see the board accomplish during your tenure on the board?
I think while I would be on the board if elected, I would love to see more resource officers. It was in the last board meeting that we have the one officer that has to run between every building in the district. And as I've said, the safety of the kids is first and foremost. We need to make sure that they feel that safety. So I would like to look into that and provide those resources that our resource officers need. It'd be more training, it'd be more staff, just more tools that they can, to give the kids. The kids love them. I know my daughter knew the resource officer when she was going to high school, and I know he's made his presence at the elementary schools as well. So I would like to boast up that resource so that we can make sure that we're doing everything we can for our children.
Very good. Nancy, same question for you. If elected, what would you hope the key accomplishments of the board would be during your time on the board?
Well, I think in addition to the plan, the five-year plan, that we also need to, and I would like to see the board facilitate those public-private partnerships that get kids out into the community and keep them engaged and keep them learning. And whether that's, you know, a retiree that's going to start a chess club or tutor in calculus or whether it's a business that's going to offer an internship or sponsor a project, we need to make that a possibility. And I know right now the communication with parents is pretty good, but with the rest of the community, maybe not so much. And I think there's ways we can really extend the learning opportunities and keep the kids engaged. So it's not just read and regurgitate. They can actually learn something and apply it and understand that it matters.
Thank you, Nancy. Rick, this next question goes to you first. As a school board member, what can you do or what can the board do to ensure that not only each student receives the best quality education, but that each student is able to achieve at their highest potential?
I believe opening up those opportunities, like Len stated earlier, to have those experiences. I know when I was in high school, I had no clue what I wanted to do. And if I had those opportunities where I could go in and shadow someone in a specific field, then that might have swayed my choices, that might have put me on a different path. And I think that is an awesome opportunity that our children here have, and it's just starting to open up, and I think the kids are starting to see that. I would love to get that expanded out more and offered to more of our kids so that way they don't always have to feel like I have to go to college even though in the back of their minds, they know that's not really for them, but there are other opportunities out there that they can enjoy and just experience life to its fullest and enjoy what they're doing to make their living.
Thank you. Nancy, same question goes to you. As a school board member, what can you do or what can the board do to ensure that not only each child or student receives not only the best education possible, but to ensure that they achieve their highest potential?
I think merit matters, and I think that if there's a gentleman named Dean Kamen who did a lot of work out there with STEM folks, and, you know, his thing is we get what we celebrate. And I think that we as the board need to celebrate merit and celebrate accomplishment and celebrate achievement. And every kid has the capacity to do something amazing, and we need to recognize it and acknowledge it. And it's not just, you know, winning the game or singing the solo or painting the picture. There's a lot of things that go into all these projects and all these businesses and all of these career choices. And I think it's helping kids align, you know, what they're really good at with what's out there and what's possible.
Thank you, Nancy. Finally, Len to you, same question. As a school board member, what can you do or what can the board do to ensure that not only each student receives the highest education possible, but achieves their highest potential?
I think if elected as a board member, along with the other board members that I would serve with, we're accountable to them students. We need to make sure that these students are provided with the most excellent education, no matter what field it is. Like I stated before, this real-world learning is coming, and we need to make sure we follow through and get down into the lower grades. And because each kid learns differently, and we need to make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs. And part of my job as a board member is to make sure the teachers are getting what they need to meet those needs of the children. And like I said, these programs like STEM, Real World Learning, and the many other different things that we have going on in the school are very important, and I'm accountable to make sure that we continue to strive to serve excellence and be excellent in the school.
Thank you, Len. Thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Rick. That concludes the questioning portion of tonight's panel. Now each candidate is given the opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement, and by drawing, we start with Rick.
Well, thank you. I appreciate being here, answering your questions. I just want to let the community know that I'm here to serve, I'm here to listen, I'm here to take back what you want, what you want to see done in our schools, back to the board with an open heart, open mind, so that we can make that achievable, make that so we can make Carney the best that we can be in everything, from sports to academics to whatever the kids find their way in, so that they can learn the way they all need to learn, so that they can go out in the world after school and make a living and bring Carney out to the world to say, this is where we got our education.
Thank you very much. Up next, Nancy, your closing statement.
So I'm going to close with a quote. Will Rogers said that you may be on the right track, but you'll get run over if you just sit there. And we can't just sit there. You know, we lost a couple of years to COVID, and we have to make a concerted effort to get those kids back on track. And then we need to hit the gas, and we need to give them every opportunity they can to go out and learn what's going on in the world. I've been through a lot of that, and every project has a lot of moving parts, and they need to understand where they fit in that scheme, and maybe they're the ones that run the moving parts and manage the whole thing, and that's awesome too. So we just need to be better at listening, like the rest of these folks said, and engaging and engaging with the community and, you know, raising the bar. We can get there.
Thank you, Nancy. And Len, your closing statement.
I thank you guys for having us today. I think it's neat that the community gets to take the time to watch and learn a little bit something about these candidates that are here with me. And I just want people to know that I'm invested. I'm invested in this community, like I said. I'm going to be a voice for those teachers and support staff, I'm going to be a voice for those students, I'm going to be a voice for those parents, and I'm going to be a voice for the community members. And I'm going to be an ear for you guys, where anything that you tell me, I'm going to take that back to administration and make sure I get back to you in a timely manner with an answer. I think it's very important because I'm accountable to you, and I just ask you to, and I hope you give me that opportunity just to serve you. And I look forward to serving you because I love Carney. I'm not just saying that. 12 years ago, they opened up their arms to me and my family, and they didn't have to do that, but they did. And it's just time for me to give back, and I look forward for that opportunity.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the candidates who have chosen to join us here today, Nancy, Len, and Rick. Thank you all for coming in. Stay with us. April 4th is Election Day. Coming up next, after we take a short break, the remaining candidates that are running for the school board election in 2023. Stay with us.
More reliable power means more of what you love. You expect your lights and appliances to turn on at the flip of a switch, and so does Flat Clay Electric Cooperative. That's why Flat Clay is working hard to make power more reliable in the Northland. We exist for one purpose, to empower communities and energize life with safe and reliable energy. To learn more about their plan to reduce outages across the Northland, visit www.pcecoop/reliability. Flat Clay Electric Cooperative.
And welcome back to this special edition of Carney Live. Tonight, we are meeting the candidates for the Carney Missouri School Board, and the election is April 4th of 2023. As we continue our panel, tonight we are joined by the second group. Let's meet the panel and the candidates now. Joining us is Nick Vasquez and Bree Schweitzer. Just like before, each candidate is given the opportunity to before, each candidate is given the opportunity to give an opening introduction. By drawing, Nick, you go first. Nick?
Hello, yeah, I'm Nick Vasquez. It's a pleasure to be here. Thanks for the opportunity. My parents moved to Carney in 1977. They moved from Prairie Village in hopes they would find a small, quiet town forever. And they were right for most of it, but since that time, it's gotten big and we're loving it. I'm a 1998 graduate. My wife Kate teaches at Carney Elementary. And we have six children in the school district, eight ranging from ages seven to 14. And they are in four different buildings. So we get to see a lot of the great things happening in our district every day. And we're enjoying it and loving it. And so, specifically to Carney, that's a lot about me, and hope it was enough for you.
Thanks, Nick. And now, Bree Switzer, and it should be noted that Bree is the only incumbent who's running for reelection on the school board. Bree?
I'm Bree Switzer. I have four children. My husband Drew works for the school district as well. I am a small business owner here with Shelter Insurance. Grew up in Carney, born and raised, my husband as well. We've, I don't know, hung out for quite a while and love Carney, love, they've, it's a good community. They love, when they love you, Carney does really good things, so.
Thank you, Bree. Now it's time for the question portion of the Candidates Forum. We start once again by drawing with Nick. Nick, what do you feel makes you best qualified to serve on the Carney Missouri School Board?
Well, like I said, in case you didn't figure out from the first minute I talked, I love Carney. I really love it. I enjoy it, so much so that I decided to come back when I had the opportunity. Also, I spent almost 17 years in public education. I spent, I taught at almost every level. I taught kindergarten through high school at some point, somewhere along the way. And at the end of my career, became an instructional coach. So I've got a lot of in, experience in that area to share with the school board and the community in helping make those connections. In addition, I'm honored to be a past president of the Missouri State Teachers Association. Part of that responsibility was leading 20 representatives from regions all over the state to work to empower and advocate for public school teachers so they could teach. Part of that also involved being part of the legislative process at the state level. A lot of experiences and a lot of time, and I'm really excited to be able to share those with the district.
Thank you, Nick. Bree, same question goes to you. What makes you feel like you are best qualified to serve on the Carney Missouri School District Board?
So the last three years of sitting on the board, I have learned a lot. It was pretty eye-opening. I think Carney has great things to offer. I think that having kids in the district, I have a vested interest in making sure that we meet the expectations and high standards that we, as a community, hold the district to. I think our leaders and administration do a really good job of that now. So I think that I will just make sure that my morals and values are used every day in decision-making and communication through the community to make sure that we have a voice at the table.
Thank you. And as luck would have it, the question, next question goes right back to you, Bree. At its core, what do you think your duties and responsibilities are as a school board member?
I mean, the, I think the duties and, for a school board member is to make sure that policy and procedures are followed and done correctly. I think that as a school board member, being, bridging the gap from the community to the district is really important to be able to listen to the concerns and the positive things that go on. I mean, the community and the students and the staff, there are boots on the ground in the buildings and stuff. So to be able to hear those and then bring them back to the administration, the superintendent, I think that's a big part of being a school board member.
Thank you, Nick. Same question goes to you. At its core, what do you think your duties and responsibilities are as a school board member?
Being a school board member is about challenging yourself to, in words and deeds and actions, to really have a forward focus, a forward mindset. We've got to recognize that the students who are kindergartners now are one day going to be graduated before we realize it. And we want to create a system and a culture that we value and treasure that they want to come back and be a part of. So first, we've got to define that school is a vehicle for learning, and for growing, and for all sorts of activities. And specifically, being able to connect kids and their families to those passions so that they can grow. They can become the people that they want to be at some point, and that they're going to experience obstacles and tough times, just like all of us have along the way, to someday become small business owners, to become teachers, to become the things that make our world so much of a better place. And by doing so, we all experience joy, we all experience some excitement, and we experience the, the value of our education that we treasure in Carney.
Thank you, Nick. Next question comes right back to you. What is something you think the Carney Missouri School District does very well?
I think Bree said it a little earlier, and I would completely agree with it. It's that we have really passionate people. We have people who really care. It's a wonderful community. It's one of the many reasons that I was drawn back to this place, is that people want so much for their kids, for their community. We, we've got a special place here, and I think people recognize that, and they're willing to do the work and put in the effort and the time and the intentionality to make sure that continues to prosper and grow, and again, become a place that people want to come back to, not just as a placeholder, but to really not only have the great times they had as a student, like I did, but also come back as a parent, because you want your, your parent, your children and your family to be able to experience it as well.
Thank you, Nick. Same question to you, Bree. What is something you feel like the Carney School District does really well?
I don't know that I have just one. I think that the Carney School District does a lot of really good things. I think that they instill good values to students moving forward. I think that they offer good programs to have them be ready to enter into the world after graduation. I think the market value assets that we give them, the options that they have to go to college or to do a trade school. And I think all of that real-world learning starts young. And so I think that we do a good job of that. I think that our teachers and our staff, they love our kids really well. And like I said, to be loved by Carney is amazing. I think our community does a good job. But I think the district does a really good job with showing students that the future is yours, that you can really do anything that you put your mind to.
Yeah, to tag along on that, Bree, the Carney Missouri School District has an excellent reputation. With that said, what is something you think the Carney School District could improve on?
I think that the past three years, I have seen the district improve on communication with hard topics and hard conversations to be had. I think that's one thing that actually came out of COVID, is that the district has done a really good job of getting their communication back out and getting parents back to the tables to have, have conversations. So I think that's probably communication a little bit.
Very good. Nick, same question to you. The Carney Missouri School District has an excellent reputation. But with that said, what is something you feel the district could improve on?
Our students perform at high academic, academic standards over and over and over again. At the same time, when you look at our, our teacher salaries, they're not quite as high as I'd like for them to be, or I think that they need to be. Right now, our, our salaries and, and in comparison to how well our students doing, it's a great value for our, for our community. It's fantastic. At the same time, we want to make sure that we're really being aware of how we're going to retain these fantastically passionate, qualified, reflective, caring, loving professionals that we have in our classrooms so that we can keep this going. So that's something I'd like to see the district take a look at.
Thank you, Nick. Back to you, Nick, different question. If you were elected, what would you hope would be the key accomplishments of the board while you were in your years of service?
Well, as the saying goes, you can't stay the same and improve all at the same time. You know, you can't grow and stay the same. So I would say that it would be that by the time I was done with the board, or that my tenure was over, that we would not be the same, and we would have grown, and that we would have been better for it. How is that done? You got to reflect. Where are, where have we come from? The reality of where are we? And the vision of where do we want to be? It's a balance of all three of those aspects, understanding that each of those plays a vital role in getting us to where we want to be, and making sure that we're not just changing just to change. So again, just continuing, continuing to have Carney be a place that people don't just want to come back to, they want to come back and live and be a part of.
And Bree, same question to you. If you were reelected, what would you hope the key accomplishments of the board would be during your tenure on the board?
I mean, I think Nick said it really well. I think just to, to keep moving forward, I think Carney holds a, a high standard for the district. And I think that we've done some really good things, even in the last year, of moving forward and changing, changing things, I think, to continue to have our administrators and superintendent hold high standards for our teachers and staffs, which goes to the students. I think just moving forward at a slow pace to, to keep, keep going, so.
All right, thank you. And final question of the evening, which I'm sure you're all glad to hear. Bree, this one goes to you. As a school board member, what can you do, or what can the board do to ensure that each student receives not only the best education possible, but that each student also performs and achieves their highest potential?
Oh, what can we do? Um, you know, I think that children, I think you learn best when you are loved and safe, and you feel safe. And so I think that as long as we can have a welcoming environment that starts at the kitchen table with parents involved, to have families involved in the district, not just be a, a teacher in a classroom, but make it a whole, whole group gathering. I think that's the best thing that we can do for students, is make sure that everyone is involved in some way, shape, or form in their circle. And, and they'll give them the best education going forward.
Thank you, Bree. Nick, final question for you. As a school board member, what can you do, or what can the board do to make sure that each student not only receives the best education possible, but perform, performs at their highest potential?
This is nothing new. Bree and I have already talked about it. I have no doubt the other candidates as well have. We have great schools. We have great teachers. We have great support staff. We have great administrators. We have people that have been put in place and take the responsibility, the ownership of not just educating the academic side of a child's brain, but also the social, emotional awareness of those children, of our kids in our district, and doing the best they can with them, day after day. We've got great buildings and great things happening, and it's already going on. So as a school board member, it might sound silly, and it's not that disrespectful, but don't mess it up. You know, make sure that we are continually, what we've done has worked. Let's make sure that if it's continuing to work, we're still doing it. And when changes need to be made, we need to be aware of what that's going to look like all the way around, to ensure that that positivity train continues on.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick, and thank you, Bree. That continued, or concludes the question portion of the Candidates Forum. Now each candidate has the opportunity to give a one-minute closing statement. By drawing, Bree goes first. Bree, your closing statement.
Thank you, guys, for having us and, and doing this. I think this is a good opportunity for us to get seen in the community and to get some of our opinions out. I'm excited to hopefully continue to sit on the board. Like I said, I learned a ton these past three years. I've seen Carney be excited for their future. I've seen some hard things happen. I've been humbled by sitting on the school board last few years. So I hope for the opportunity to continue the great, greatness that goes forward.
All right. Thank you, Bree. Nick, your closing statement.
Yes, thank you for the invitation. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for bringing the board members together here. Thank you for providing this venue, this vehicle for our community members to learn more about each of us, and to learn more about who we are as people. To those watching and those listening, you should be commended. This is, it's important to be an active part of our communities. Again, it, nothing happens good or bad by accident. We're always moving one direction or the other. And so thanks for being part of this. If at any point you've heard something I've said that you're like, man, because of that, I, I don't think I can support Nick, let alone vote for him. I, I ask you to give me a call. You know, give me a call, give me an email, give me the opportunity to better explain. We may end up agreeing to disagree at the end either way, but at least we, we can, at least we've made a good effort at it. So thank you again, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you, Bree. And thank you for everyone, all the candidates for joining us, and everyone for joining us. We hope that this gives you a valuable insight into the candidates that are running for the school board in the 2023 election. Once again, the election is on April 4th. Make sure you get out and vote. Thanks for joining us on this special edition of Carney Live. For those of you joining us on 102.7 FM, stay tuned. Carney basketball's coming up next. For everyone else, good night.